There's also a telephone number to dial in and participate via telephone. First order of business is a call the meeting to order. Aye, John Trefethan in present.
Aye, Brian Forrestall in present.
Aye, Daniel May in present.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan in present.
Aye, Stuart Segal in present on Zoom.
Okay. Item number two on the agenda is a public hearing for 61 Waverly Street, a 40B comprehensive permit application. We received a request by the applicant last week to continue the matter as it hadn't completed its response to some of our peer review comments and requested a continuance to May 27, 2025. Anybody opposed to granting that continuance? If not, is there a motion to continue the public hearing on 61 Waverly Street to May 27, 2025 at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Segal, also vote in favor.
Thank you very much. That takes care of that matter. And going on to the third item on the agenda, which is the continuance of a public hearing for 10-60 Main Street, another 40B comprehensive permit application. I will read the notice. The Ashland Zone Board of Appeals will reopen the public hearing to hear the petition from SLV Ashland LLC requesting a comprehensive permit per Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Section 20-23, to allow for the development of two multifamily-story buildings for 250 apartment units and 337 concealed podium parking spaces. The applicant also proposed to restore and convert the northernmost mills, 7,500 square feet into commercial and retail space, some of it open to the public. The property in question is located at 10-60 Main Street, assessing map 14, Lot 128, in the Ashland Overlay Downtown District A, parenthesis ADD-A, close parenthesis, and industrial base zoning. This matter has been the subject of a hearing at, starting on January 7 of this year, and most recently on April 8, when it was continued to this evening. Subsequent to the continuance, the applicant has submitted several, excuse me, several documents responding to some of our peer review questions and comments, and we have subsequently also received peer review responses. And that being said, Mr. Engler, would you mind perhaps? I think it would be helpful if you could, let's, well, we've got two issues. We've got the traffic, and then we've got civil engineering. Why don't we see if we can perhaps close out traffic? That's what we've been dealing with the longest.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record. My name is Jeff Engler, the developer and member of SLV Ashland. It's good to see everybody. To, consistent with Mr. Chairman's synopsis, I believe it was the beginning of two weeks ago, or maybe it was the beginning of last week, we did a fairly robust submission on both outstanding traffic and civil engineering-related issues in two separate submittals. There was some overlap, and we provided both of the town's consultants, or the peer review consultants, excuse me, the full updated civil engineering set prepared by Bowler. And I do see that both of the peer review consultants are here tonight, so I do not want to steal their thunder. I will just give the board my perspective as the applicant. I think we collectively have worked rigorously over the last several months with MDM on revising project entrances, adding access to the garage, and doing a whole number of other things. And from our perspective, and I think MDM's May 6 letter bears this out, from our perspective, we have no more outstanding issues as it relates to traffic or transportation. I believe they are all, we have all addressed them satisfactorily. Once again, I do not represent MDM nor the board, but that is our perspective, and we submitted plans, sweat path analyses, and a number of other things in response. And like a lot of things, and this pertains also to the Hancock Associates letter, I think ultimately what has resulted is a better project. Has it been rigorous? Yes. Has it taken us a while to get to this point? Yes. But at the end of the day, I think the project is safer and better engineered because of the contributions and the review of Hancock Associates and MDM. With that said as well, relative to our response to outstanding civil engineering issues, Hancock Associates submitted a letter on May 8 in response to our submission. And similarly, and I'll let Mr. Piznola certainly represent his perspective, but we believe most of the comments have been addressed in that regard. We acknowledge that there is some additional details that will be worked out with the Conservation Commission when we file a notice of intent. We have the matter of eventually talking about our waiver request, which is beyond just civil engineering. But other than that, I think on the key issues that were identified in the April Hancock Associates letter, it's our perspective that we have addressed those and certainly made great progress. So I'm joined tonight by Eric DeBruel from Bowler, our civil engineer, who would be happy to talk about any, you know, technical elements of the plan. But I think, let's just say we're at a much better place than we were January 6 relative to the plans. They've changed. I would not say dramatically, but they've changed in a way that has made the civil engineering and the traffic, for lack of a better description, better. And we feel very good about that. So, Mr. Chairman or members of the board, I don't know if you have any other questions, but I think it might be helpful to hear from your peer review consultants so they can either confirm or deny the comments that I've just given.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Yeah, I do think we could probably go to our traffic peer reviewer and get his comments on where things stand. Then we'll have questions from board members, and then open it up for questions from the public, and then we can perhaps move on to the civil engineering aspect. I know there is some overlap, but I'd like to deal with the traffic at this point and see if we can perhaps finalize where we are on that. We have, as our peer reviewer tonight, from MDM, Dan Dumay. And Dan, I will turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. Dan Dumay with MDM, Senior Project Manager. As indicated by the applicant, we did receive all their updated data and provided a letter back on May 6 indicating that the issues outstanding for traffic have been resolved in terms of the technical aspects. I can go through what the key updates in their plans were if you go to the next slide. Basically, it had to do with access design and then the parking and the loading. So there's modified alignments with radii and median fixtures on both the Main Street driveway and Myrtle Street driveway to provide adequate sweat pass for the emergency ladder truck, delivery vehicles, which is a single-unit 40 truck, as well as single-unit 30 moving trucks. There's a modification to the island and scored concrete area on the Main Street driveway to accommodate the fire department's comment about allowing the ladder truck to make that left turn back out onto Main Street, as well as an ambulance. We're going to put, we recommended to put a scored concrete apron on that so the ambulance does not have to mount any curbs or anything for that use. The driveways along Main Street, including the primary right-in, right-out driveway, as well as the short-term pickup, drop-off driveway, was modified at our request by Bowler to include driveway aprons that go flat across the driveways to not only promote slower speeds in and out of the driveways, but to enhance the ped realm. As part of the Myrtle Street driveway, we had to modify the corner radii to adequately account for emergency vehicles, as well as the moving trucks not swinging into the wrong side of the roadway in or out. Doing that gave a slight enhancement to the sight line looking to the left with that wall. Between 10 and 30 feet was gained, so they went from 200 feet to about 230. It is still meeting kind of the minimum and not the ideal, but it gives a little bit of wiggle room in case the wall that they build is off by a couple inches or something. But it's a little bit of a benefit there. We looked at the updated parking management plan that they provided, and they recolored some of the spaces for the commercial and reallocated those. They've indicated in a letter that they're going to have a parking management plan, which is going to include wayfinding signage, as well as stickers for the residents. And then they'll do a monitoring of the parking and work on any changes they need as they find tenants. The move-in, move-out area in the back for the residential uses has been expanded from 36 to 54 feet to accommodate the 30-foot move-in truck, as well as the platform. And then there's going to be a managed four spaces by the management company on site in case they need to move more than one vehicle, one person into the apartments at the same time. They would have enough area and an off-peak time to move those around. I can show you some of their plans if you go to the next slide. So this is just the updated plan. The driveway on the Main Street, you can see it's been widened with corner radii that are slightly larger. Modifications to that median, that's the one on the right side of Main Street. The driveways across the Main Street, as well as the short-term driveways, have those aprons for the pedestrians. There's the modification to the Myrtle Street driveway to widen out the corner radii on that right side, as well as provide a little scored concrete median in there to kind of give it more of a 90-degree perpendicular alignment to Myrtle Street, as well as give you a little more flexibility to get about that 230 feet looking to the left, which is a slight improvement. If you go to the next slide, I'll show, it just goes through the various auto turns. The first one is an ambulance coming out at that Main Street driveway. There's a scored concrete area so they can make the left-hand turn without having to mount any part of that island. If you go to the next one, I believe it's the fire truck. So that'd be the fire truck, so the nose of that island and the signs have been set back so that fire truck can make that left turn out without going into the parking lane on the opposite side. And then the last one for this driveway is going to be the single-unit 40. They modified the width of that exit in the corner radii to accommodate that right turn within its own lane, so it no longer has a swing out into the left-turn lane going to Pleasant Street. Similarly with the other driveways, this is the ladder truck going in, right turn in, right turn out, stays within its lanes. We recommend they modify the portion where it goes into their parking lot to be a little wider so that it accommodates those turns as well. The second one is going to be the moving truck, very similar to the fire, works just a little bit better, but again, accommodates it within its own lanes on-site and onto Myrtle Street, and then a left, right turn from Main Street side. The loading area in the back, that's the hatched-out area where they have the truck backed in there, that had been modified from 36 feet to 54 feet. It'll accommodate the truck in there, but also putting down the platform and giving you some maneuverability room to get to the doors. And then the area I hashed about in their plan, but there are the four spaces that are hashed out in yellow. Those are the additional spaces that'll be managed by the management company in case they need to fit two loading trucks or moving trucks at the same time. And then this is the updated parking allocation plan. I believe the only change of this one is there were some spaces on the, for the commercial, there are spaces of, let's see, 35 to 47 that are now blue, and those had incorrectly been just identified as being resident spaces before. So those should satisfy that area. Like I said, they're going to do a parking management plan to make sure the passes that they're giving out, the number of parking passes for the residents, as well as the location of those spaces can adequately accommodate what they need for the commercial uses, and those could be adjusted as needed. So those are the big key topics that we have left, so they've adequately addressed those, but happy to work with the board on any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one point I'd like to make that I didn't make previously is I think, I can say this having seen correspondence, MDM worked very closely with the town's fire department and police department on providing us comments on what they wanted. So this plan does not just reflect MDM's request, it reflects what other municipal departments have requested. So we've worked pretty closely with the fire department and the police department to make sure that all the access turning movements, et cetera, et cetera, they're comfortable with. And I can say emphatically that this is far superior to what's going on out there today. I mean, people may not care about that, but there's a fully functioning commercial enterprise that's operating with, you know, entrances and exits and needing to be serviced, and what we're now presenting, thanks to the close collaboration of the town, MDM, and our engineering team, is, I think, really great for the fire department because it's infinitely better access than what they have today.
Okay, members of the board, any questions for either Mr. Engler or Mr. Dumay? Brian, why don't we start with you?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Dan?
Just the grade change at the entry points. I'm not asking if, you know, you've done an in-depth analysis, but, you know, has that been validated as, I guess, you know, acceptable from a elevation perspective? The grade changes coming in and out of?
I mean, I'll defer to Eric, but I can say if the slope of, you mean from Main Street down, right?
Correct.
Yeah. If that's, Eric can say what that slope is, but if that exceeded, you know, whatever, what is it, 10% Eric, or 6%? What's, or Dan could answer that question. What's commonly, you know, accepted industry standard relative to a safe slope? I believe we're well underneath that. I mean, I can say also, I think it would have been picked up on by somebody at some point during the peer review, so, but I'll defer to Dan or Eric to specifically say what the slope of that run is, if you guys know.
I'll defer to Eric if you know what it is, and then generally below 8%. There's no sidewalk in that section, and then you want a level landing about 100 feet from the end so you can kind of get a level landing of your car while you're going over the sidewalk.
Yeah, so it varies between 6 and 8% there, so we're comfortable, especially without the pedestrian sidewalk, as Dan mentioned.
Great, thank you.
Brian, any questions?
No questions from me, thank you.
Stu, on Zoom, how about for you?
Yes, I have a question. How does our peer reviewer feel about the letter from Mr. Engler of March 13?
May 13, Stu, perhaps?
Well, I thought it was March, but it could be May.
No, I don't think it's.
We have a letter from April 16.
Well, it's the letter that Mr. Engler wrote indicating that he did not want to synchronize a, an entrance and an exit with the traffic light at Main Street and Pleasant Street.
So I believe that letter, I don't know the exact wording of it, but I believe the applicant gave the reasoning why a driveway at that location was not either economically feasible or they were able to provide one.
Well, I'd like to know your feeling about that with regard to the safety for this project and the success for this project.
I think it was more of an engineering issue than a traffic issue, and it could not be engineered. We provided a pretty detailed letter, and respectfully, we've worked really hard since then, over the last few months, with the peer review consultants, and now have demonstrated that everything is safe. The entrances are safe, resident and emergency vehicles can navigate in and out of the site safely. So from our perspective, that's a closed issue. We couldn't physically do it. It was so complicated to make those driveways aligned, so we worked hard and endeavored to make the project work with the access points and their current location, and I think we've done that really successfully. So from our perspective, we're not addressing that any longer. We think we have addressed it.
Stu, anything further?
No, I just still have a concern about that whole issue. But let's proceed.
I have a question. I want to focus on the drive that exits onto the Myrtle Street. Earlier in these hearings, we had a lot of discussion about the sight line and the minimum required, which ultimately, I think we came up with 200 feet, which was the minimum required. And then it was further designed, so now we're up to 230 feet. And if I recall correctly, both the police chief and the fire chief who were here and commented upon the matter were looking to see for a 290-foot sight line that would provide even more safety for fire trucks coming out and regular trucks, trailer trucks coming out of there. I'm not quite sure. I don't understand why we couldn't get from 230 to 290.
A couple reasons, but if it pleases the board, we'd be happy to knock down the existing building and increase the sight line. But we worked really hard with the town, and it was our understanding that the town really wanted to preserve that building. And with that comes certain limitations, and the sight line that we're providing now is better than what's out there today. And yes, 200 feet, I think the representation that 200 feet is like just the minimum, so people are slamming on their brakes and barely making it by an inch. That's not accurate, and I defer to Dan, but the 200 feet has been crafted and designed to comfortably allow stopping sight distance. We've now worked really hard and at great expense, because we have to move a utility pole, which, you know, is a total pain in the butt, and something I talked about a little bit. And we're now at 230 feet, which is a big improvement. And I think the town, from our perspective or what we've heard, is, you know, that's a big improvement. And that, we have engineered this site seven ways to Sunday, and I can say definitively that is the best sight line we can do unless the town is comfortable with us knocking that building down, which we would entertain.
Okay, thank you. Dan, and this question is for you. There has been commented several past meetings about the bridge on Myrtle Street and the trucks not being permitted to drive over it, and the question has been raised whether would this drive, the way it's being aligned, whether there would be a violation of that. And I know in your report, you address that. Could you just mention exactly what your findings on that were?
Yeah, so mass duty is a heavy vehicle, truck restriction on that road. So in between the Framingham, Salem End Street, and Main Street, there would be no through trucks allowed on that segment. This particular project has a driveway on Myrtle Street, so it would be exempt from a truck going to and from this particular site in terms of a delivery move-in truck. And I believe that the restriction is not due to the weight of the bridge, it's just they want people to have an alternate route of using 135 in larger streets and all of the trucks cutting through there.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from anybody else on the board? And I think we'll wait and hope, whoops, Town Council, who I didn't introduce at the start of the meeting, but should be well-known to everybody by now.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just wanted a couple of clarifications as I take notes for decision drafting. On the parking plan, it was my understanding originally, and maybe this is just for demonstration purposes, but it was my understanding originally that there weren't going to be assigned parking spaces, that there was some benefit to not assigning parking spaces. Is this, the proposal that you provided, is that just separating commercial from residential, but not technically assigning parking spaces?
That's correct. I think the intention is to designate spaces by use, but people will not have space 23 assigned or space 142. They'll have a residential garage space or surface space, which will allow them to park in any of the spaces. So there'll be no assigned spaces, but we were asked to designate spaces for commercial use, for guests, for short-term deliveries, et cetera, which is how the signage will be reflected ultimately. But yes, nobody will have a specific space assigned.
And then one other follow-up question. It's my recollection, this goes back to the Myrtle Street sight line. It was my recollection that when MDM, several meetings ago, showed us potential ways to achieve the sight line, none of those actually took the building down. And as I look at your sight line plan, C301, the current sight line is pretty far away from the building. So I don't know, I just want to be clear that I don't know that you would actually have to take the building down in order to achieve the sight line. You may have to change the design of your proposed plaza and things of that nature, but I just, I don't, I don't know, because I recall the MDM sample, if you will, that did not indicate that the building would come down, but the sight line would be better.
That's a fair point, but where the disconnect is coming in is MDM is not understanding, with all due respect, nor was our traffic engineer, and this is where I would defer to Hancock and Associates and Bowler. We have to meet compensatory storage requirements, and to do the things that MDM was asking, we could not meet those minimum requirements.
Well, but that's different than taking the building down.
Correct, but we could meet those requirements if we took the building down and increased. So it was a little bit, I agree, relative to my characterization, probably not as accurate as it could be. But for the building to stay and for us to meet the compensatory storage requirements from our civil engineering perspective, we cannot do better than 230 feet. Trust me.
I just wanted to clarify that for the board, because I don't think it was an accurate characterization.
Fair, but that's hopefully more accurate.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
If there are no other questions, why don't we withhold public comment of questions to after we have the civil engineering aspect of the matter and put it all together, because that didn't take too much time? And why don't we call upon civil engineer to tell us a little bit about what you submitted after the last meeting as we started to talk about the civil engineering aspect of it, and then we'll have our peer review consultant comment as well.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Joe Piznola from Hancock Associates. We did.
Joe, I think we were going to, I asked them to just comment on the civil engineering, but they replied to your initial comments and then, in your submission, and then we can hear from you. How would that be?
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I think it would be better to hear from your peer review consultant, because we submitted everything, and then he commented on it. I mean, I can run through the letter, and Eric can run through the letter, but this is a little bit of a departure from the way we've done it in the past. But if it pleases the board, I can read from the letter and then have Joe do the same thing.
Well, let me ask our peer review consultant. Joe, what would be your preference?
Mr. Chairman, probably makes sense just for me to touch on the main issues.
Why don't we do that then?
Yeah. So we did present a letter dated May 8, and we did review the applicant's response letter from Bowler dated May 5, the revised preliminary site plan dated May 5, the parking flood management narrative. parking flood management narrative, the parking flood management plan, revised waiver list, and expanded flood map, FEMA map. So, first, with regard to the waivers, you know, the waivers are fairly complete, and as noted by the applicant, it's generally the practice during these 40B hearings to get through all of the technical reviews and then dive into the waivers in a little bit more, in a little bit more detail, so that the board can start to discuss their feelings on the waivers and the applicant can hear that. So, I think the waiver list is in fairly good shape with one exception, which I'll mention shortly. And we can set that aside until the board gets to, you know, that point in the process. By and large, as Mr. Engel had characterized, we have come to somewhat agreement on many of the issues. I do want to qualify that. I think I said at the initial meeting, our job as the civil engineering peer review in review of a comprehensive permit, noting that the regulations only require preliminary information, is for us as the civil engineers to get to the point of comfort that there's enough information to be able to advise the board that the project can be ultimately designed to, to meet the applicable standards, that they have asked for the relief in the form of waivers, and that we have enough information to assist the board in discussing the mitigation as applicable, and also in formulating conditions of any decision that you make. And I can say that we're at that point, but the qualification is, is there is more work to be done. And with respect to some of the more detailed technical information we have, we're relying on what will be a fairly robust review of that information by the Conservation Commission. Because when they submit to the Conservation Commission, there is no such thing as preliminary plans. They have to provide sufficient detail and fill in all of the gaps to be able to satisfy the Conservation Commission, that they meet their standards. So, I think we're at that point, and the part of our comfort there is, is knowing that that process is to come. And that process will be prior to the applicant's work to put together a final plan submission ahead of a comprehensive, ahead of building permit application, which is, which is very normal in the 40B process. And Attorney Mead is well-aware of how to craft conditions that require this, the subsequent submission of all of that, those final plans. With regard to the one waiver that we, or possible waivers that we want to bring the board's attention to, and it has to do with the commercial component and the signage for the commercial, for the commercial component, there has been no signage package presented for that. The applicant believes that that's premature, because they don't have tenancy in those commercial spaces, they don't have marketing themes or what have you. We had, and I just had conferred with counsel before the meeting, we were, we were in error of, in thinking that the applicant could not ask for any waivers for anything with regard to the commercial component, but that's not correct. Since the 2008 reg changes and some case law, the applicant is entitled to ask for waivers on the commercial component. So, they could ask for waivers on the sign, on your sign bylaw, with regard to the size and location and height and all of those things. This originally came to light because in one of the renderings, they show some signage on the stack, which could be a very good thing for marketing and promoting whatever commercial ventures go in there. And I think it warrants a little bit more discussion with the applicant with regards to that, and not to have a complete detailed sign package, but to understand the location of the building, the topographic challenge, the fact that you're sharing the site with the residential. And I think from a viability standpoint, for the, for the commercial component, there may be need for visibility of the signs and therefore size, location, height, putting signs on the stack, that may justify waivers, without getting into the detail of color and content and any of that, but just to kind of think about that and say, okay, the zoning bylaw restricts signage to X, Y, and Z, height, size, whatever that be. And we feel from this standpoint, from the standpoint of having a viable commercial space, which is somewhat formidable, it's 11,000 square feet, we think we're going to need signs that are a little bit bigger and taller, whatever. And have that discussion in the, in the public forum, because absent that, what's going to happen is the board renders a decision, and then the applicant has to come back. And the question will be posed, is the request for additional waivers regarding the sign package a substantial change or an insubstantial change? Well, the regulations would probably point you towards insubstantial when you look at the magnitude of changes that warrant deeming a change substantial by the regulations. So, that, that change would then be approved by the board once it deems it insubstantial, without a lot of discussion and definitely without public input. So, I think it just, it warrants discussion amongst the boards, possibly discussion with the applicant, just to understand that piece of the pie and how it might play into the bigger picture. With regard to, with regard to the flood management plan, they, we did ask for a flood management plan. They provided both a plan and a narrative, and we find it a very good start with regards to just addressing the issue that that back parking lot could flood six or seven feet. So, you'd need to move the cars. So, they've started to formulate that, that plan, which is, which is appropriate, and how they're going to ultimately turn that plan over to the management company to interact with the residents in the event that there's a flood coming to do that. So, we think that's, that's, again, a good start, and that can evolve as they get closer to construction and they have a management company and they can interact with that management company and formulate that a little bit, a little bit tighter. The, in the garage, there's two levels, the lower level will be flooded, the upper level will not. So, there's, they're calling some opportunity there to stack some cars in, extra cars up on that upper level, and hinting towards maybe having to relocate cars to, to the MBTA commuter lot or different places that in the event of a coming flood, may be available to be able to do that. And the details of that can wait, but it's, it's good that we, we've got that down in paper, we've got them thinking about it, and that can evolve, and we can work on how, how maybe a condition will tighten that up as, as they move towards construction and ultimately signing up tenants and occupancy. With regards to the compensatory storage that Mr. Engel mentioned, and the, that whole piece of it, we had a concern with regards to the three pipes that are in the wall that are currently there, and that they're maintaining and adding another one. Our concern was that they were proposing to add gate, tide gates on the, on the outside of those, so that they would let water out, but they wouldn't let water in, and how that might impact not the 100-year flood, but the smaller floods in between your everyday flood, and basically the floods that might be between the bottom of the wall and the top of the wall. Just for context, the 100-year flood is a foot over the wall. So, when the 100-year flood comes, the wall doesn't matter anymore, water's everywhere. But in the smaller, smaller floods that are lower than that, we speculated there might be some interaction with those pipes, in which the Sudbury was backing up, getting up against the backside of that wall, coming in the pipes, and using the volume below the top of the wall in the parking lot there to mitigate some downstream potential impacts. So, we had them, we, when we, when we met with, with the engineers, we talked about them studying the floodplain. What is the nature of the adjoining floodplain? Is it a wide expanse floodplain in which this 13,000 cubic feet doesn't matter? Or is it a, is it a highly gradient floodplain in which there really isn't, there's, the water moves down? It might flood out, but it's, but it's moving down. So, their analysis in looking at the FEMA maps and expanding the FEMA maps further down was that the reach between the site and the two street crossings downstream, there's about a 10-foot gradient elevation change. The floodplain elevations go down 10 feet in a fairly short distance. So, that means there's a lot of velocity, there's a lot of movement of water, and there's, there's less of a concern that, that this 13,000 cubic feet interaction with the, with the pipes and the walls is going to actually be detrimental to the surrounding properties. That's not the end of the day, the end of the picture, the end of the analysis, when they get to conservation. Conservation has full jurisdiction over the floodplain, it is a resource area under the Wetlands Protection Act, it is bordering land subject to flooding. So, it is totally within the purview of the Conservation Commission under the state act, and it will be fully vetted at that point. So, we think there's, we're comfortable at this point that they've answered the question about the inclusion of the tide gates, they've gotten some specifications on those tide gates to get me comfortable that they'll, they'll work as designed. And we can, we can put that in, comfortably put that into the hands of the Conservation Commission for the next, you know, the next step. With regard to the stormwater, they, they were resting on the fact that this is a redevelopment project, that under Massachusetts DEP regulations or definitions, any site that reduces the impervious is considered a redevelopment project and has to comply to the extent practicable. The problem with that is there's no definition of practicable. So, it's left to the reviewers and the regulators and administrators. I thought that they could do more, and they did. So, they went back and they did some enhancements to the, to the plan with particular attention to the back parking lot, where they were doing the least with regards to the treatment. They, they did more, they did some enhancements, they added some provisions for snow storage and signage where not to put sign, snow, because it would interrupt the functionality of these enhanced treatment systems. So, we think they're in a good, a much better place from the standpoint of providing treatment. That, again, is squarely in, will be in the, in the purview of the Conservation Commission under the notice of intent, and their requirements to, they will be the ultimate decider of what is truly the extent practicable in issuance of the order of conditions for, for the project. So, we, we think that's, that's better. And the final piece on the, on the stormwater is, is just, we asked for a little bit more detail on this rear pump system. So, what, what essentially happens in the back parking lot is water goes into these surface treatment swales, works its way down to the pipes through the wall, and then moves through the wall in the small storm events, the half-inch of rain or the one-inch of rain. When the storms get bigger and water starts to collect more, those low-lying areas adjacent to the wall have overflow catch basins, where the water will stage up, go into those catch basins, go into a chamber system under the parking lot. And that chamber system will be pumped up and out to the outfall of the former raceway. So, we just thought that there needed to be more information on that, and how that would, when that would function, how that would function, and they gave those, those details. Now, they, they do need more detail, more work, but again, that's, that will fall under the purview of the Conservation Commission. But we're satisfied that that, that system will work. It's, it's not going to, to work as fast as it can rain in some larger storms, so there will be ponding in the back, and they haven't fully identified at what point does, does the water start to go into that system, and at what point does the water start to overwhelm that system? But that's, it's, it's better than it is today, again, redevelopment, extent practicable, but it, there will be times at which there'll be, there'll be some ponding back there. And then, again, if the 100-year flood comes and the wall gets overtopped, there's loads of water back there. But we think that they've got, they've given us a good handle on how that system will work, and we can, again, work on the conditioning so that we, we see those final plans after they finish with conservation and when they submit the final plans, and we can, we can rest on, on that. And with that, I think, yeah, I think that, that was it. I think those, those were the major issues that, that we had made the most concern prior, and that through, through our meeting and their subsequent submission, and then my review of that, I think we're in a, we're in a good place.
Thank you. Questions for our peer review consultant?
Brian?
I, again, don't have any questions.
Dan?
Yeah, I'd just like to better understand the maintenance and upkeep of some of these systems at a high level, and if there are like state regulations to, you know, meet these requirements every five years or what have you.
Yeah, there are very stringent requirements on operation and maintenance, it's one of the, one of the most important things in modern-day stormwater management, is an attention to that need. And any project of this magnitude has a very robust operation and maintenance plan that they've put together, that will have to be done. The system will have to be inspected multiple times per year, it'll have to be cleaned periodically based on the findings of those. And I'm sure the Conservation Commission will continue, will condition that- And I'm sure the Conservation Commission will continue, will condition that those operation and maintenance activities be documented in a report and submitted to the town. And we can, we can be redundant and put that in the conference of permit as well. But yes, absolutely is supercritical that they be, that it be very detailed and that it be done. And that, you know, it does put a burden on the town from the standpoint of collecting that report and policing when the reports don't come in. But we can certainly put some teeth in the conditioning, and I'm sure the Conservation Commission will do the same.
Thank you.
Brian?
No questions at this time.
Stu, questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Could you just summarize what work is necessary to reinforce that retaining wall?
They're actually building a wall in front of the retaining wall. So they're not re-
You're building a new wall?
They're building a new wall in front of the existing wall. So that's how they're taking care of not having to tear it out and to investigate its structural integrity. So we looked at that in detail. They provided fairly detailed information on that, so we're satisfied that it works.
Thank you.
Anything else, Stu?
No, sir.
In your May 8 report, you highlight several issues which are going to require Conservation Commission input. And could you just highlight for me what specifically those issues are that you addressed in your report? I'm not quite sure I understood the full ramifications in the, in your report.
Yeah, I mean, there, let's talk about the stormwater modeling, for instance. They have, they provided some very preliminary stormwater modeling to look at the amount of stormwater runoff that will happen, that happens today and that will happen in the future. That model needs to be elevated and become more detailed, and kind of looking at not just the site as a whole, but looking at individual areas that will contribute to different parts of their system, such as this, okay, when the water goes in the back parking lot, the lower-level storms are going to go to the, this treatment system and then into the pipes. And then, at some point, it's going to stage up and go into the catch basins and go into that chamber that gets pumped up to the raceway. They haven't modeled exactly how that's going to work, as far as the sequencing, what storm event, how many inches of rain in a 24-hour period engage that secondary part of the system? And then what is the pumping rate versus how much water's coming in versus how much water may be backing up? They'll model that in detail when they get to the Conservation Commission. So we're comfortable enough that there's enough detail, there's enough information there, both in plan form and narrative, to understand that sequencing, that concept of the water's going to go different places at different times within the storm event. So when they have to go to conservation, they'll have to come up with a much more robust, detailed stormwater model, provide that information, and then refine the design as far as what are the exact elevations of the catch basin rims in those back areas? How big is that underground system? How, what size is that pump, and what's the pumping rate that it goes at? So when we talk about the 40B process and the need for preliminary information, that kind of a detailed stormwater analysis is too much. It goes beyond the spirit and intent of the regulation. But it doesn't with regards to the Conservation Commission. They have to provide all of that information. Conservation Commission will have that peer reviewed and verify and confirm that their adjustments to this system are appropriate. Now, does it change the fact that they have four pipes in the walls and this treatment system and this overflow system? No. So from the standpoint of what this board is reviewing and what this board has to deliberate on and condition, and how generally the system functions and how the residents may interact with that system, there's enough information there for us to be comfortable with it. But we may not have done that. We may not have deferred to the Conservation Commission or stopped them from giving us more information and us pushing for more information, had we known that there was no Conservation Commission process after, right? So we may wanted, we may have wanted to see more. So there's, so that's why I repeat the statement, understanding that they have to go to conservation and that process will be robust, because this is a very environmentally sensitive site, that we can take comfort and advise the board on how to properly condition. We think as far as defining the mitigation, they've done it. So the mitigation is the way that they're putting this system together, the sequencing of the stormwater as it moves through the site. So we're comfortable that there's no more mitigation that's needed, and we're comfortable that we can help you condition it properly, knowing that they have to go to conservation.
Thank you.
For the applicant, Mr. Engler, the waiver on the signage package, I think that could work well to help kind of conform to the surrounding area. But is your proposal to, is that applicable to the entire signage package, or were you thinking like monument, pylon, the larger signs?
I'm glad you asked me that question, because I was going to get up and make a comment, because it's one of the things Mr. Piznola, I think, really, the only outstanding kind of ask. And let me back up, because we're, the way we typically do it, and we're at risk here, because as of, if the hearings closed and we've given you no signage, we have to comply with whatever's on the books. So we're at risk. The reason we don't submit is not because we're being coy, it's because we haven't thought through, where do we want the signs? What kind of signs do we want? How big? Blah-bitty blah. So there's a lot of details. With that said, in the spirit of helping out, and Mr. Piznola has mentioned signage for the commercial component, that's only a small piece. I mean, we have 11,000 square feet of commercial slash retail, but we have 250 units, and you can bet that we're going to want some sort of attractive signage. So with that said, maybe what we can do, because we have a little bit of time, is do it halfway, in that we'll endeavor to provide locations, kind of types, if that's helpful. It's not going to have a name, it's not going to have a logo, there's not going to be any colors, but we can say, we would like a monument sign, three feet by five feet, and it's going to locate it on the site plan. We're going to want a sign by the door, we're going to, and if that's helpful, if that's what Joe is looking for, I think that's something that we could pull together, and it can be, you know, included in the decision. We may, you know, in nine or 10 months, when we've into our construction-level details, be back in front of you to tweak that, because sometimes, you know, things like that get adjusted as you get a little closer. But I think we can make a good faith effort to locate, you know, what our current thinking relative to sign, not just for the commercial, but like the front entrance and, you know, and let me be clear, too, it's not going to be like wayfinding signs, like parking or, you know, things that just go on a post. It's going to be like permanently affixed, you know, sign on the building or on the front. So if that's helpful, I think we can, over the course of the next several weeks, submit something for the board and Mr. Piznola to give a review of.
Yeah, I think, you know, preliminary understanding of like the monument and pylon signs would definitely be helpful, and I think it would, the waiver would actually benefit the development. So, thank you.
Mr. Engler, do you want your engineer to comment at all, or?
Candidly, Mr. Chairman, I just asked him, and I think, I think Mr. Piznola did a good job characterizing everything. I don't think we have much to add, other than, I'll reiterate what I said at the last hearing, we certainly agree and understand that there's a level of detail that's going to be required as part of the notice of intent process with the Conservation Commission. And Eric can attest, as can, you know, my wetland scientist, I've just asked for them to provide proposals to do just that. But as customary, at least in all the projects we work on, we wait until we know we have a permit, we know we have a plan, and then we will be filing, and I'm not going to say immediately, but really close to with our, I mean, the notice of intent, there's a lot that needs to go into it, so we don't pull something off the shelf. These guys have a lot of work to do. But I can say we are going to do that shortly after we've concluded our process with this board, because there is a lot of detail, and detail that I, as the developer, want to know, because there's cost considerations that go into, you know, putting, how big is the chambers that are going in the ground, and how other infrastructure and the like. So those details were coming, but we were happy, I was happy, that Hancock Associates arrived at a place that they could say, okay, we feel comfortable that the general approach to all of these issues can work. So I think that's where we're at.
Before you sit down, I believe Town Council has some questions.
I just have two things. One is kind of small, but actually big in a way. So we had some discussion last time Mr. Piznola was here, related to the trash and recycling location, which has changed, but also is still, I think, the trash recycling for the entire site. And there was some concern about if you had a food service establishment, they would want a separate trash container of their own, which is standard, right? So I'm, I just want the board to be aware that it's still one location.
Counselor, that's only, yeah, that's only for the retail and commercial.
And where is the trash for the residents?
I believe it's in the garage, right? Yeah, it's in the garage, yeah.
Okay, great. I just wanted that clear.
Yeah, so that's only for the retail.
Okay. And then, the last thing that the board hasn't talked about, but you might want to talk about it, and I don't know if you want to talk about it now or at another meeting, is the landscape plan. So there is a landscape plan. Mr. Piznola commented in his comments that I think that the plantings meet the requirements of park, for parking space. But this is in the downtown, in an important area. The landscape plan is in here. I don't know how much the board has looked at it, but you may want to take a look at it and have a conversation at a later date about it, and whether it, you think it's appropriate for the high-profile location that it is, and how it mixes in with the rest of the downtown, that was all just recently redone, if you know. So you might want to take a look at the landscape.
I think we would perhaps do that at our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman and Counselor, if it would be helpful, we could bring our landscape architect to present the plan, because I'm not a landscape architect, and if I was left to my own device to look at a plan, I may not fully comprehend it. So maybe what we'll do is at the next hearing, provided he or she is available, and if not, the one thereafter, and I'll certainly work through the town to let you know, will present the landscaping plan, and then you can talk amongst yourselves, you can come back with questions, but that probably would be more helpful.
I just want that, one more thing. I think it would tie nicely with the signage, or at least understanding some of the larger signs, and kind of the whole landscape. And again, I think it could benefit the project well.
There are no other questions, why don't we open it up for public comment? We don't have many people here in the room, but if you're observing via Zoom, raise your hand, and our Assistant Town Planner, Alvaro Espaza, will allow you in. And we do have our traditional first comment, Mr. DeSoni. Name and address, please.
Mark, Mark DeSoni, 119 Main Street. I have about two or three things I want, so I want to see what order they're going to be in. The first about the traffic, about the parking lot, the straightaway in the front, where the front is, by the sidewalk between the two entrances and exits, has the bus app looked at for safety, for a certain speed limit to go through?
Mark, your question is whether there is a speed limit in the park?
In the parking lot, once it's, there's people parking, people walking around, there might be a safe, a safety speed limit, in case cars go straight through from Main Street and can't find a parking space, they're going to try to do the length, is there going to be a speed limit to make sure it's safely passing through?
Dan, any consideration of a speed limit for the interior parking drive, I guess?
Generally about 10 miles an hour, but usually don't post it. Usually set up by design and potential speed calming devices if needed, but this one's not a super straightaway, so.
No, no, but there's going to be people walking, and people getting the cars backing out into it. Just got to make sure, be careful. You're saying, if it's there, it's going to be posted as 10 for the max in that area? Will it be posted?
Mark, that's something that we can talk about as part of the conditions if we get to that point.
If, okay.
One more question, if you would, please. Give other people an opportunity.
And the parking design, well, what, it's going to be a mix of retail, commercial, and the tenants. How much commercial spaces are there going to be before, in cases retail, or any other visitors that might go in?
Dan, do you have the, offhand, the number of commercial spaces in the most, the most recent design?
It's 59, I think. You're right.
I believe the answer was 59, Mark.
59?
We need to move on.
Okay. Is there going to be another time to come up in this meeting tonight, or no?
Well, we have other people lined up, at least one, and, you know, you've been up there for about five minutes, and that's what we try and limit public comment to.
Yes, if there is another time, I'm going to ask a different question.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And next person online, Alvaro, if you could let them in?
Yes. Amanda, I'm asking you to unmute, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Amanda Walsh, and I live on Pine Hill Road. I wanted to start off by saying I appreciate all the effort that the builder and team have put into this project. They have made great strides to make, you know, current issues better, and I appreciate them taking the time to do that. With that said, I am disappointed that the builder never provided a plan that aligns with the lights, especially considering that there was a plan before this that did align. The builder has said that it's not possible, but if it's not possible, then why was there a plan that was very far along previously with the planning board that did align with the lights? And yes, that plan, I know, did not have as many units, but I know it wasn't that far off either. Is it just that the builder, you know, isn't willing to change their plans, you know, or, I don't know exactly what the reasoning is, but it'd be good to know? what the reasoning is, but it'd be good to know. The public has continuously voiced their opinion on this matter, and I had hoped that the board would have followed up further on this matter, and seeing if anything further could be done regarding it. And I would still like to ask the board, you know, is there anything we can do, or is there anything that, you know, the board would be willing to ask the developer to look into further regarding this? I think not aligning the building with the lights is a big mistake for the town, and it's going to be difficult for residents or anyone who travels through downtown to get to where they're going. Finally, I understand that the builder has or is very close to meeting the requirements for traffic. Again, I want to reiterate, you know, I appreciate and think all the efforts that have been put into this, but meeting the requirements and developing something that is best for the town are two different things, and I just hope the board heavily weighs that before approving the traffic portion of this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, and no one is here in the room, so why don't we close a public comment for the, for the evening on this matter. Mr. Engler, we need to talk about the next scheduled hearing. Our next scheduled meeting would be on May 27. We have the Waverly Street 40B project already scheduled for that date. Do you want to join that and perhaps do landscaping?
I do, Mr. Chairman. That's on my calendar. The only caveat to that is if I talk to, I mean, Bowler has a couple different landscape architects, but if for some reason nobody's available that night, we might have to push it to the next one. I don't anticipate that, and we'll do our best. At a minimum, that two weeks, maybe not for the landscaping, but for us to develop the preliminary signage package, I'm going to do everything I can. I might not be able to provide it very far in advance, but we'll try our best for the 27th for both landscaping and signage, and maybe we, we, in some case, we only have one or the other, but let's hold that date, and we'll be prepared to be here.
I mean, we also have water and sewer to do, and also architecture.
Yep.
I'm assuming we can do water and sewer after we do the landscaping. I don't believe we have received a water and sewer peer review as yet, have we?
I believe the Helion Ward, which is the peer reviewer, they started looking at it. I asked for the applicant to submit some information, and I'll be working on this week with the peer reviewer, as he requested some extra information from Hancock Associates, to have a meeting together and then keep working on it.
And to the extent there's any more information, or if there's anything, obviously, our team is at their disposal, should they have any questions as it relates to water and sewer. So, Mr. Chairman, we'll do our best to be ready on the 27th to do signage and landscaping.
And again, if you need to request an extension of time or continuance, please do so. I think we're ready for a motion to continue the hearing to May 27 at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you all, everybody. Why don't we take a brief recess to allow our applicant to pack up and move or leave if he wants to, or he's welcome to stay and listen to our next item on the agenda, which is the board discussing the 40B application, which is presently pending before the housing agency. I was just testing to see if you were paying attention. Good evening, everybody, and welcome back to the Tuesday, May 13, 2025, meeting of the Astron Zoning Board of Appeals. Next item on the agenda is to receive board comments on the proposed 40B project at 55 West Union Street. As we discussed briefly at the meeting last week, a developer has filed a request with the State Housing Agency, seeking permission to file a 40B project on West Union Street, 55 is the number, at the intersection of Memorial Drive, for a residential four-story apartment building of, is it 156 units? I didn't bring my piece of paper with that on it. 116? 116. And the town has asked for comments from the various committees and whatnot in the town, and citizens in the town about the project. So if you're at home, and you want to give the town your opinion, what the town will do is they'll compile the opinions and, that they get, and submit it to the State Housing Agency for consideration. I believe the deadline for submission, with the extension that the town has been given, is May 28. So that's a date I got right. We, again, just started a discussion briefly last week, but there was some trouble with not everybody having all of the documentation and plans available to look at. So that problem, I believe, has been solved, and I guess I will open it up to the board for, for comments on the proposal.
John, I see that Stu has his hands, hand raised. Stu, do you have any comment?
Well, I was just going to make a point of order, since there was some confusion about the documentation that I was referring to in, in my testimony bef, before from Strategic Land Ventures. It was indeed the March 13 letter that Mr. Engler wrote to the board. I have a copy here, if anybody needs a copy.
Okay, well, we're, we're not on that hearing anymore, but we can certainly address it at the next meeting.
Well, I didn't have confidence that people were understanding what I was talking about.
Okay, well, we will, we can address that at the next meeting. In the meantime, you said it was March, March 13?
Yes.
Okay. I will find it amongst all of my papers and look at it as well. Now, going back to the proposed 40B at 55 West Union Street, comments, Brian, Dan, Brian, Stu?
I have a comment. I'll start off.
Sure.
In reading the proposal, it was all very similar to the Arbella project that the zoning board went through some time ago. They covered the same items that the board ultimately approved back when, even though it wasn't a 40B, it was still for the building of a structure for, for residents. So I had looked through it, and I thought it was pretty well-done. I did make a comment to Alvaro that I think they're going to have to change the address of this project from 55 West Union Street to somewhere along Memorial Drive, because the two entrances are on Memorial Drive. But that probably will materialize later on in, in the duration of the project's plans.
Anything else, Stu? Good points.
No.
I did note that the entrance and exit from the, the lot was on Memorial Drive and not on West Union Street, which is certainly a, a plus, because suggesting traffic to get from a drive out onto 135 is tough. And they also would have the benefit of the traffic light at Memorial Drive and, and West Union for entrance onto Route 135. It's a site that's a little over four acres, I believe. It was commented upon at the last meeting by someone who was on Zoom, that the proposed new Metro West YMCA is going to be built across Memorial Drive from it, and that may be cause for some concern about children in the area, and also perhaps making sure that landscaping and what have you is appropriate to shade as much of the locus this can be from the other sites. Not quite as concerned about the Dunkin' Donuts across the street, being able to see the apartment building. Yeah, freewheeling.
So I definitely had a concern about traffic flow down Memorial Drive. That is a, the Dunkin' Donuts, and, you know, kids coming from the middle school, when they get out, it's a swarm of kids walking through there. Memorial Drive is like a raceway a lot of times, especially when a train gets out, people flying down. I, I know this project could further complicate that by having the additional traffic. The other concern I had would be the timing of that light coming out already is usually not short enough to get the line of traffic out onto West Union. So we may end up with having to have timing that that will be longer, which will be further back up on West Union itself, especially if you're coming from, you know, from the downtown area heading towards Hopkinton. Obvious concerns, but, you know, the YMCA is a further complication, too. We don't, there's no way to know how that's going to tie in, or how far, I don't know when that project's actually happening.
It's a long way away from what I've read in the paper. It's just starting its fundraising now, and has received a grant from some, some organization to help with the fundraising, but it's, it's quite a ways away. Of course, yes, go ahead.
I was going to say, as administrative update, I guess, in that matter, I know that they have submitted some preliminary work to the building commissioner, and he might be working on drafting a letter if they were to request any waivers to come in front of the zoning board of appeals. And they're also preparing their application package to come in front of the planning board. So they might be starting their permitting process within the next month or so.
Oh. And this site also is closer on West Union Street to the project that we approved a couple of years ago, that unfortunately got tied up in litigation, and it provided us with safe harbor, but because a building permit wasn't able to be pulled within two years, we lost the benefits of safe harbor, and here we are with 40Bs coming at us from every angle. Ryan, your thoughts on the proposal? I'm sorry, not Ryan, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Dan and saying, Ryan.
Yeah, a question for the applicant. I just wanted to get a high-level understanding as to your approach with this proposal, and how you arrived at, you know, the number of units. I know it's early on, but.
Well, again, those things typically are not, I think, information that's contained in the, the application. They put down the number of units, et cetera, but I don't know, going by memory from the application that we were given a copy of that they filed with the state, I don't believe it requires how they arrived at that number. I think they do have to document the number of parking spaces, and whether that complies with town ordinances or whatnot, but I'm.
Yeah, I was just more curious on their approach.
It's filed to, looked like two partners. One is a so-called 40B specialist, is, is biography in the application, and the other is a local businessperson. So in that sense, there's a more local connection than what we have with the two matters, 40Bs that we have before us now, which are, you know, not being developed by anyone local. Not that that should give them a heads-up, or an advantage or a disadvantage, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, any thoughts on this?
You know, I, I think the way that they're doing it, to put the driveways on Memorial Drive, is beneficial. I think that helps. And just the same concerns that you guys have already said, Dunkin' Donuts right there, YMCA right there. How is that all going to tie in?
I mean, I'd like to see it set back on the property a little further than it is, and there may be reasons why it, it can't be. But again, those aren't delineated in the, the plan, the, the application that we've been, been given, to sort of separate it from the rest of humanity that comes down Memorial Drive.
Yeah, I think there may be ways to potentially recalibrate the, the traffic light to accommodate higher demand with YMCA and, and this. So that could be something.
Problem, obviously, is that at rush hour, the demands on 135 and the demands on Memorial Drive are butting heads because they're.
It's also a state road, so it's not really up to the town to recalibrate the lights, right?
I think 135 is responsibility. I think 135 is responsibility to the town. Take responsibility for 135. I think we had, we learned of that at the last, last meeting. One of our select board members corrected me when I was telling someone that it was a state highway and know for quite a number of years, for whatever reason, Ashland has basically control over it. In any event.
I can double check that in the board note.
Alvaro, do you have enough to put together a, a letter which, or memo that you could distribute to us, and then we could get it to the town manager's office in time to submit it as part of the May 28 submission?
Yeah, I think like most of the concern, as you've mentioned, is traffic and all the variables that are within that area. So I'm happy to use one of the drafts that we submitted to MusHousing previously and then kind of clarify on that, expand on that matter.
Is it also necessary to just put in the further concern that we have with every project, which is lack of water, lack of sewer? Is that just boilerplate when we put these comments into the state, or are we?
Well, I think it doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
Because they are concerns.
Yeah, and I think that like 10 years from now, you just want to make sure that that's something that is aware us, like new infrastructure is coming in that is part of those. So again, like since we have a lot of that backbone from the last couple of 40Bs, I'm happy to reuse some of that language and then just kind of like break it into this project.
Okay, good, then why don't we do that, and any further comments or discussion on this before we move on to the next item? Okay, next one. Next item, meeting minutes. We don't have any available to review, so we will skip that and go on to staff updates and administrative matters. Alvaro, anything to report?
Not any updates. Next meeting will be on May 27th. Like you stated, John, 61 Waverly will be coming back fully with traffic to continue. That's what the applicant has seen today. I guess one update was that last week, the applicant from 61 Waverly requested a meeting with our staff just to receive comments from the different departments. We met, and they are working on receiving any further information they need, especially for site plans. Some of the abutters mentioned some of like the concerns about stormwater and those kind of matters, so they are working with DPW to continue providing more information. So they will be coming back with traffic and potentially some civil work.
They, they filed any submissions since our last meeting with them?
Not at this moment.
Any comments or updates or administrative matters?
When is your last day again?
It will be June 6th, so I'll be presiding the next meeting.
Have to bring a cake. You will be missed, my man. You will be missed.
I'll miss you guys, too.
Okay. If there are no further updates or administrative matters, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second.
I second the motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Thank you very much. Stu, thank you. Good night.
Good night.